Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, eternal, just as for all. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. So, roll call please. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Here.
Councilmember Valentine?
Here.
Mayor Protem Patterson?
Here.
And Mayor Vargas?
Here.
Okay, thank you ma'am. Let's just move straight into oral communications. I think there'll be ample opportunity to talk about the centennial and kudos to all the staff members and residents who were here during our own final comments of the evening. Madam Clerk?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
I have two cards here. Jonathan Byrne? Jonathan Byrne? Is that you? Oh, do you want to address the City Council?
Yes.
So you come up to the podium and there's a microphone right there, sir. You can address us.
Okay. All right. First of all, congratulations to the city's 100 year anniversary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow City Council members, City Manager, and everyone else here for allowing me to speak here today. I'm here to speak in regards to the events that took place this past Saturday, July 9th. My name is Jonathan Bian. My family runs a small business called T-Shirt Outlet located at 12251 Hawthorne Boulevard. We have been in business since 2005 here in Hawthorne and I'm grateful for being part of this community. We did receive prior notice notification from the city about the street closure of Hawthorne Boulevard from 120th Street to El Segundo. I did call traffic control last week to confirm if Hawthorne Way and 120th Street would still remain open, and I was told that the streets would remain open. You can imagine my concern of having these questions because we rely on the income of our store to make a living and to make ends meet. When we arrived at our store this past Saturday morning, we noticed that Hawthorne Way was closed because the Islamic Center was having an event where they had set up jumpers and inflatables on the street. We had not received any notifications in regards to their event or was even offered any kind of voice or concern. Meanwhile, for the whole week last week, we had been advising our customers and putting signs up that Hawthorne Boulevard would be closed, but they could access our store through Hawthorne Way. So yes, it was a surprise when we arrived at our store on Saturday morning. With Hawthorne Way closed off as well, this impacted our business tremendously. We did less than 5% of what we usually do on a regular Saturday. With basically no vehicle access to our store, it really ruined the business day of the week for us. Of course, you may argue that the loss of income was due to the parade, in which I strongly beg to differ. The point that I'm trying to get to is this: Why would the city give permit to the Islamic Center to close off Hawthorne Way knowing that Hawthorne Boulevard would also be closed on the same day from morning to evening, not allowing access to our store or other businesses? Did the city not have any consideration for the businesses located between Hawthorne Way and Hawthorne Boulevard? If the city knew that the parade was going to take place on July 9th, maybe the city could have suggested the Islamic Center to have their event the day after, the day before, or even a week prior or after, in order not to affect the neighboring small businesses so much as well as traffic? After calling the city yesterday and only getting a response of "Well, it already took place, so why does it matter now?" I decided to come in and make my voice heard in hopes that the city would consider not to allow something like this to take place again in the future. That's fine to close off a street, but to close off both streets and to not allow access to our store, which in effect our business, was a move from a city that could have been prevented with careful planning, and I'm hoping the city will be more considerate towards small businesses when such decisions are made. And on a side note, I just wanted to let you guys know that I did receive a call from Akbar yesterday, apologizing. However, we are still upset at what happened on that day. Thank you very much.
Sir, what was the name of the individual that gave you that quote?
It was a lady. I didn't write down. She was at the traffic control.
Which department, the traffic control?
Traffic control. That's exactly what she... And yes, I did get into a little bit of an argument where, what do you mean, why it doesn't matter? Because our income is based on that, what we do business. So that is the exact quote, and yes, I was in disbelief when I heard that too.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, can you talk to the chief, track down the individual that made that comment, and explain to them that they're not supposed to speak that way to residents, and if you could take a look and see if there was a permit issued or if it was done without a permit, and then just follow up with the appropriate response?
Mr. Mayor, can you ask him to repeat the name of the business, please?
T-shirt outlet. It's the old Western surplus. Some of you guys may know the older Western surplus, but we've been there since 2005 as well. So, but yes, I still got an apology from Akbar, but I was still upset at the phone calls and the event that took place. Obviously, you can probably tell that I'm shaking a little bit. I'm not used to this meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I hope, at the same time, even though this was an inconvenience, that you still enjoyed the parade with us.
Yes, I did.
It was nice, right? Okay. Pat Donaldson?
Patricia Donaldson.
Either way. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Patricia Donaldson, the Hawthorne Chamber. We're having our casino night on August 13th from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM at the Moose Lodge, and we hope that all of you can make it. And then our golf tournament is going to be September 26th at Rio Hondo, and that's in Downey, and shotgun is at 12:00, registration is at 11:00. There'll be a continental breakfast, there'll be a full lunch, and a buffet dinner, and there'll be door prizes at both events, so I hope that all of you can make it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the City Councils? Go ahead.
Okay.
Come on, let's go.
Can I take this off? I just wanted to say thank you guys so much. Oh, sorry, I'm Amy Shepherd from 139th and Doty. Thank you so much for this weekend, to Vaughn and his team and the committee. I had so much fun, from the centennial dinner, to the parade, to the picnic on Sunday, and I'm sorry to the mayor, I missed last night because I had to work late, and I missed the time capsule, so I hope I can go home and watch that. But it was just a lot of fun, and I hope we can do something like this parade every year. I really remember it from when I was a kid, and it was so special to just share it with all of the neighbors. I did, while I'm standing up here, want to say one more time about the city charter. I fully support that you guys want to keep municipal control of the land use, but I don't agree with the salaries. $94,000 seems a little excessive, and if we could be something a little more moderate, like maybe $24,000 or $30,000, I think it would sit much better with the voters. So if you could please reconsider that. And then also, finally, on that note, I think there's a question around the Thursday meeting, whether it's like a special meeting for the charter. I saw on the website, it was a cannabis meeting, so I'm not sure if there's a different time. I couldn't find the meeting for Thursday night. And that's it. Thank you.
If I may through the chair, just to clarify the agenda. Ms. Shepherd, there will be a cannabis meeting at the regular schedule at 11:00 in the morning. Then there is a special meeting, it's a second public hearing for the charter. A special meeting at 6 o'clock. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
It was not on the city website today.
It should have been posted today for both... The cannabis meeting should have been posted 72 hours before Thursday. I can't calculate math right now, but... And the special meeting for Thursday evening at 6 o'clock was posted this afternoon.
Next, please.
James Raddick, 3822 West 144th Street in Hawthorne here. I was going to come to complain, but I'll say that for another meeting. Just want to say, we had great time at the party. Now, we didn't go to the dinner, we did the parade. It was great. My wife got suntanned on her face, but we had fun anyway. We came down here, had all kinds of fun. We went to the park on Saturday, to the museum. That's nice. It's a lot of new stuff in there. So, that's doing good. And we were here today, enjoying it. It was fun. We really did a great job, guys. We'd like to thank all of you and everybody that volunteered and helped with doing that. But I just listened to Ms. Shepherd speak, and I don't go online to your page, but you don't see any of this advertising for the charter meetings. Other... I don't know, where else do you advertise? That's the only thing... Because it's not... Well, I know it would never be in the Daily Breeze.
If I may through the chair again? So the notice for the charter meetings, public hearings, it's published two times at the Hawthorne Tribune Press.
We don't get that in our neighborhood.
And also, it's posted at three different locations within the city. One is right outside here at City Hall, where all the notice and agendas are posted. Another is at the library, and the third is at the memorial center. So those charter public hearing meetings are posted at three different locations and published, and we're required by law to do that.
But it's not getting out to the people. Not everybody goes to the library every week, so we have the problem of getting the word out to people. These guys...
And also the agenda...
My neighbors don't know anything about it.
It's also on the city website as an agenda.
We don't use the website. Like, I had a heck of a time trying to find the agenda on this, so get it out to the public. Otherwise, why count us to vote?
Right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, everyone. Gordon Michael Migo, native resident of Hawthorne since October 8th, 1952. The five days of celebration of the 100th anniversary of Hawthorne as a city was phenomenal and outstanding. From the dinner at the memorial center, to the parade along Hawthorne Boulevard, to the block party in the civic center, to the historical museum in Jim Thorpe Park, to the state of the city in Memorial Park, and to the time capsule in the civic center. The people of our city enjoyed memorable events. All of these celebrations were a result of public and private partnership of our elected and appointed officials, city employees, Hawthorne Police Department, community leaders, dedicated volunteers, various organizations, corporate and business sponsors, and the spirited individuals who participated in them. The parade, which lasted about an hour and 30 minutes, and a lot of people says, wow, I didn't expect it to be that long, you know, featured classic vehicles, music bands, marching groups, beautiful horses with the riders on, and Huey helicopter, Hawthorne PD chief and officers with their vehicles, Public Works orange shirts, excuse me, employees in the trucks, tractor, and so on, and many people in the community who line Hawthorne Boulevard from 120th Street to 141st Street. So, led who was involved in the celebratory events and so richly deserve it, so.
Thank you, sir. And you've been in the city of Hawthorne since what year?
1952.
1952. Awesome. Awesome. Next?
Hi, good evening. Ruben Sanchez, president of the North Hawthorne Community Association. Want to congratulate all of you for the event that took place this Saturday. I want to a little bit elaborate on the business licensing situation, the business situation. That's something that's been going on for a while now. I know we've received multiple complaints. They always try to call in the business licensing. I believe there's really no one there, we need some more personnel. A lot of these businesses are also, because we do get these phone calls, we get these emails, we hear feedback from residents. A lot of these businesses conducting pretty inappropriate business sometimes, and some days, and there's really nowhere to complain. Same thing, unfortunately, he went to, I guess, to the police station, and he was dealt with the situation and what he explained, but then the same thing when you come to City Hall, you know, you really don't know who to talk to in business licensing. There's no hotlines where they can complain about certain things about businesses conducting business that they shouldn't. A lot of them are conducting businesses with no licensing for certain things that they're selling in their own businesses, and who can these residents complain to or ask questions? We need to start focusing on our City Hall when it comes to the business licensing, especially if we want to bring in business. We have to attract business. First of all, with the customer service, you know, that's something that we should be taking into consideration. Just an opinion, and hopefully we can work together and bring in some more businesses to our city in the future. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay. I think I have an item for a directive. Okay, anybody else? All right. If I, since I don't see anybody else lined up, I declare oral communications closed, ordered. Madam Clerk, the consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have two items on the consent calendar. There are items one and two for your consideration and approval. Item one, approval of waiver of full ratings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item two, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for adoption.
Okay. I move. Second. It moved and seconded. Please vote.
Real quick, to the chair. I just want to make mention that I was not present at two of the council meetings, and I don't have those dates on hand, but if you could just assure that I abstain from those two meetings on the minutes.
Mr. City Attorney, for an appropriate vote and for nothing improper to be misinterpreted, how should we approach with the wording here?
Perhaps she should abstain from the last meeting that she had missed for the minutes, approval of the minutes.
Right.
So maybe we can just word it in a way that councilwoman English will abstain from just the minutes, approval of the minutes of that meeting.
Yep.
Okay, my City Council members retract their vote, so that their motion, so that we could just restate the motion. Are you guys okay with that?
Okay. What's the motion?
Two separate votes?
Yeah.
This vote's two separate times.
Two separate times. I'll make the motion based on what I heard. Approval of the waiver of full reading of resolutions and item number two, and item number two for both. Let's vote on all of those items in which our councilmember colleague was present. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
I was present.
In the ones that you were present.
Okay. I would be abstaining, right?
The ones that you were present.
But I didn't approve in any minutes.
Yeah, I don't see any minutes there.
Okay.
I think you could...
I'm still going to be... I'm still going to be...
Full readings of res... Okay.
Right, I still have to abstain, right?
She still has to abstain for the ones that she was not here.
No, this is...
Mr. City Attorney, just go ahead and word that for us, the motion, please.
So I think councilwoman English, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, that there is no minutes in here, so it's just a waiver of full reading of resolution ordinance for tonight's meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure that...
Yes.
I'm not voting on something.
There's no minutes on the agenda.
Actually, so the problem solved, so...
Go ahead, repeat your motion, sir.
Okay, I go for my initial motion.
Yeah, I'll second. All vote.
Thank you, Mr. It's a time capsule.
The vote reflects mayor and city council members voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I appreciate my council colleagues' cautiousness there. City Manager, your consent calendar. Madam Clerk will be reading this for the City Manager, items three through seven.
Item three, approve an appropriation of $40,000 from the Selective Enforcement Traffic Enforcement Program Step Grant Account 244-2102-257-0-0-47404, and an additional $9,680 from the Police Department Vehicle Maintenance Account 100-2101-222-0-0-47404 for the purchase of two police motorcycles, and approval of a purchase order in the not to exceed amount of $49,680 to Bartels Harley-Davidson for the purchase of police motorcycles. Item four, progress payment number five and final acceptance in the amount of $24,664.38 due to United Storm Water Inc. of Industry California for Street Inland Improvement Project Phase Two, Project Number 20-07. Item five, progress payment number three and progress payment number four and final acceptance in the amount of $460,848.80 due to Southwest Pipeline and Trenchless Corp. of Torrance, California for Sewer Improvement Project 2022, Project 21-07. Item six, professional services agreement between the City of Hawthorne and De novo Planning Group for a project-specific environmental review and EIR. Item seven, First Amendment to Agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Michael Baker International for Planning Services. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items three through seven?
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and approved. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, we have our City Attorney's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, you'll be reading this for the City Attorney. Item eight.
Item eight, deny application of Nahoma Diane Rangel to present late claim pursuant to Government Code Section 911.4. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve item eight?
I move. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
So we have some action items, and that's good. Looks like we have two from one of my colleagues and two from another, so I think that's the correct approach to kind of just keep within the policy that we have, so thank you, guys. So go ahead. We have Mayor Protem. Can you go ahead and start with your item number nine, please?
Yeah, it was about a discussion to enhance the security at City Hall and City Council meetings. I know the chief had some information that he wanted to... For fifty years.
Good evening. Yes, I believe we submitted a few of the proposals. It should be there, there should be about four options for your discussion.
So, I mean, I brought this up because obviously we had a lot of violence in the media around the country, and the, you know, question is, should we have any greater security at City Hall, even around, at City Council meetings specifically, or maybe even around City Hall? And yet the chief submitted a few options, though. Could you outline those options, Chief?
Basically, the, there are several options there for security here. You know, one of the aspects we're looking at is getting a metal detector device and using that before council meetings is one of them. The others are, in essence, continuing with our current security measures that we have. If we have any other intelligence or any information that we feel that, you know, would necessitate additional security, we would have plans in place, but we do have a sergeant in arms here that it's, that's here every night or every council meeting throughout the duration before and after. So there are several, several options for you to consider. The main one being if we want to implement a metal detector outside and man that. With that comes some additional training, some funding issues, along with some training that would, that would go along with that, so I think there are a couple of options there that have listed that.
So, you know, just want to open up to my colleagues and ask if you guys would like to implement some kind of greater security measures or not, whether it be a metal detector for those that attend City Council meetings, or even those that come to City Hall. But I know there are some other cities that have increased some of their, their security at their City Hall and in their City Council meetings, so it's always something that, you know, worth for us to discuss. I don't have a specific recommendation, but definitely think it's something we should consider.
To the Chair.
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Patterson, for bringing this item to the council. I think it's very important with regards to elected official safety, but more importantly, the community at large. We have seen time and time again the disruptions that's happening at schools, you know, the thought of it happening here. It's real, and so not to make anyone be fearful, I think it's just a matter of coming up to the times in which we are in, in which we should evaluate more. Thank you, Chief, for your recommendations. I would be open to detectors, I would be open to including sergeant-at-arms, not only at City Council meetings, but committee meetings and meetings where especially elected officials are participating. I think that's important, and, you know, there's, there's just a lot of controversy that, just today, for instance, Pastor Greg made a comment with regards to, it's not a popular thing sometimes that we have to vote on and make choices on, and we don't know some of the individuals or folks that might, you know, want to target City Hall for whatever reasons. And then again, we also have to think of mental health and mental behavior and those other things that fall into consideration. So I thank you again for bringing the item. I'll support those efforts and more importantly, the chief's recommendations, and I think it's something that we need to do, especially with the, the employees that we have here at City Hall. We've been so accessible and just, you know, not maybe in the last two years, but for the longevity that we've been here in, in the City of Hawthorne, we've had, you know, a lot of traffic coming in and out of City Hall, and I just, just think it's something that we should consider and move forward with, so thank you.
Some of these options look like include, in addition to maybe either a wand or a metal detector, also a suggested option is a second officer kind of being visible in the parking lot as a deterrent. You know, what are you guys' thoughts?
Any comments for my? Any comments for my council colleagues? I have some opinions, that's.
All right, to the Chair.
Go ahead, sir, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I believe we know, we are experienced across this nation, you know, a lot of violence, gun violence, and we, we, you know, so many tragedy that's happening, not just in schools, but in parking lots, in malls, and God forbid, you know, I haven't heard nothing about City Hall so far, but, but I think since the United States Congress have passed that, that new version of a new gun law partnership, it might be some money coming down the pipes for cities and municipals and schools. Maybe we could, you know, bring the metal, the metal detector, and, and I don't know if, if we really need another security, another police officer outside, because, you know, the police station is right over there, and then, and they're watching the council meeting, so, and then we, like the chief said, we have a sergeant-at-arm over here, and his arm, so, and he sometimes, you know, he does escort some of us to the parking lot, you know, when we get out, so. I would see the metal detector, yes, and then one sergeant-at-arm, and then we'll go from there, right? Because I think the police will be here in thirty seconds if something happened to the parking lot. So, that's my opinion.
Okay.
I would, I would like to hear from the chief on the, the, how the metal detector would be used, what would be the, the method of using that, and how would, how would the second officer be used?
Sure, so when it comes to the metal detector, there's, you know, you have to have staffing to staff it, so we would either train our, our own folks to be able to manage that and, and, you know, have people come through. The other option would be to hire a security firm that would sort of outsource the, as you would go to a concert, you know, you, you have security folks out there doing the metal detector process, so that's another option. You know, when it comes to the metal detector, I mean, we, there's a lot of issues that go on, that, that, you know, people have medical issue, conditions that we might, we'll have to consider, so there are some significant training that the staff would go through along with an additional, some resources that goes along with it. So it's not just a machine that's unattended, we'll have to make sure that we have the appropriate training and personnel to, to run the metal detector.
Is hand wanding just as good, or, or would you recommend that as, as an alternative?
We could consider that. We'll take a look at a, you know, take a deeper dive into that area, but that's, that's a good point. We, you know, right now, we're focused on using an actual metal detector, the, putting that out there.
But I was, my question would be, is there anything that a metal detector would pick up that the hand wanding would not pick up?
Hmm, that's a good question. I don't know the specifics of that, so I wouldn't know. I assume that the both would pick up, you know, what is needed as far as any sort of contraband or weapon.
Oh, it would be my recommendation that we use the hand wanding if it's, if there's no difference.
Okay, we would, got it. I'll, we'll do some more research on that and see where we are on that.
All right. All right, my feedback, and I appreciate you mentioning this, and of course, all the different things that have happened around the country have caused alarm. I have residents that have heard the last meeting, and they say, hey, somebody, if they want to shoot you, they will. If they want to get you, they'll catch you in the parking lot if it's one of us. So, I mean, it is what it is, but right now, the focus that we're talking about is the council meetings and trying to protect those who come inside the council meetings, right? We have a trained police officer who is right here, post-certified, et cetera, knows what to do in emergencies, okay? I want to start talking about opening up City Hall for residents to come. Try to start setting a date for that. Some, some, I mean, it's, the, the business owner had a trouble, he had to make telephone calls. If he would have walked up to the desk, form a line with six feet apart, wearing his masks, et cetera, he would have been able to get access to the people he needed to talk to. A lot of the business owners that are having trouble reaching the departments here in planning or in building and safety and in the cashier's office, that's all going to be solved when they can come in, form a line, and talk to somebody at the desk, right?
Mr. Mayor, the City Hall is open already, isn't it?
It is open, hasn't it? But by appointment, or is it fully?
Fully open, no security at the door.
All right, so then guess what? It's even worse. So we're talking about only having this thing just for the City Council meetings? That's the focus, that was the focus of this discussion. So, fine, let's say that, you know, that it's open. Are we going to have a full, full police personnel presence managing the, the security, not only on this end, but on the other end? Somebody goes in through the front door, they can still get in through the back door? When somebody goes out, one of the employees goes out, runs in, does whatever they have to do? I mean, I think it sounds good, I think, we just have to, the logistics is going to be challenging, right, Chief? I think you know the types of things I'm leading to. Somebody wants to get in and cause mayhem, they will. So I really don't think that a wand or a metal detector system where they walk through is going to solve it unless we have full-time person or, police personnel in the front and the back. Arms, is it going to be in armed services that we're going to have managing both the front end and the back end with the metal detectors? Say they find something and they're not armed, they have to call the police, the same, same effect, they'll rush through, get this, oh, you got something on your, let me see, let me pat you. If they're not armed, then it's going to be a problem, and if they're armed, they might not be fully trained to be able to deal with the scenarios just like our police are supposed to, right? So that's, I'm just saying that there's a lot of questions. I think the, the idea is worth looking into, but it just gets a little bit more complicated. So, that, I mean, just feedback, that's it, I'm not saying no or anything, I just want to see more and get opinions from our, my colleagues and my, our police chief.
Well, I would like to suggest that we do some enhanced security specifically for the City Council meetings, and I don't, I'll be open to whether it be a metal detector or a wand program, but I think it'd be nice to include some additional security, at least for the time being, we can reassess it in three months, six months, and see if it's necessary, we want to change it, though, but I would like to ask the chief if you can look into specifically what would it look like one way or another, maybe work with the City Manager to see exactly specifically what that cost would be, just specifically for the council meetings to start off with, and we figure it out from there, so it's just twice a month for, you know, hopefully not four hours, you know, we have long council meetings, but, and I, I know through my experience, people only kind of come in through one entrance way to the council meetings, I don't think we really have many entrance to the back way to, to the council meeting, so I think we can man somebody in the lobby to, you know, to inspect whoever comes into City Hall during the council meetings, and it will be all right.
Well, no, I, I understand colleague, fellow colleague on what you're saying, but we should only be protective for, we should only be protecting the residents to come to the council meetings, or all residents that come into the City Hall building? I mean, that's a question.
But, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem is saying to protect us, City Council meeting, right?
What are we worried about?
Because we have, like, the experience of last meeting, that the lady came very brooding, and then it had to be escorted outside, for example. So I, that's what I'm understanding, is to protect us, the City Council meetings, and then we can talk about, you know, to protect the whole City Hall on a regular basis, nine to five, or eight to, eight to five, thirty, how can everybody can walk in access to the, to all the departments? That is another issue that we have to deal about, say, okay, do we going to have security twenty-four seven in City Hall during business hours? And then specifically, I think what, what Mayor Protem is saying is for us to have security for us, and of course, you know, everybody that's going to come through the door is going to be pat or going to be screened, or going to be going through the metal detector to come in to sit and listen to, to our meeting.
No, and, and I understand the concern because of.
But as far as City Hall altogether, though, I know at Carson, there's two people that, at the front door throughout entire business hours, armed guard and another person managing, manning, manning the metal detector from seven AM to six PM Monday through Thursday. So that's something obviously we can consider, but I just, this item was just really talk about council meetings.
No, no, and, you know, you're right, it's focused on this item, but, I mean, I can't look at this, I like to look at this along with the safety of the residents, because there have been incursions where people are, have come in during business, during business hours.
Yeah, that's well taken.
And it's been within, like, the, staff here has been able to handle it, right? It hasn't got past anything, but if we're going to start looking at this solution, or here for us, I mean, I'm not concerned, I'm exposed to whatever, because I'm elected for, this is what we signed up for, we should already know the risks. I'm at home, people know where I live.
I go everywhere.
People know that I drive a Mazda CX five with plates and gray colored and everything.
They know I'm at my house.
Whatever, everybody. And so, no, so, so.
Where y'all live at? Let me reference that.
What's the license number?
Even Patterson, why, Council, Mayor Protem, why you writing that down? Wow.
To the Chair.
No, but you guys understand, I'd just like to, Chief, I mean, I think it's worth, not that, yeah.
So, all well taken and points, and that's why we have the recommendations, sir. I think I would like to do is work with the City Manager, City Attorney's Office, come up with some sort of plan, whether maybe, as Councilmember Valentine said, that we start with some sort of, you know, wand that we can do. What I, my, my, one of the things I want to make sure is that our community members have easy access to still be able to come here and not feel like they, you know, they're going through double security checkpoints, as open council meeting, we have doors open right now, but I do understand and, and sensitive to the security, so I think what we'd like to do is I'll, I'll get with City Manager, City Attorneys, the City Attorney, and come up with, we'll, we'll try something, and then, and then see how it goes, and then modify it from there. Maybe incremental, we see how that works out and how people feel, because. I mean, we do have to put extra folks, now, you're, you're talking about two things, so if you're talking about security of this building during business hours, that's a whole nother.
Right.
Report, and that's going to entail, you know, hiring outside security staff, we won't be able to do it through the police state, through the Police Department, so I think we treat that as a separate matter. I think we consider what we can do here for the council meeting to make sure that we can provide the safety for the council members and the constituents, and yet at the same time be able to make sure that we have an open access for our constituents to get here and, and feel safe here. It will require some training on our end, but that's okay, I mean, it's, it's good for us to be able to, to do that, so let us, let me work with the City Manager, we'll come up with something, and by the next council meeting or the next other council meeting, we'll have some sort of measure in place, and then we'll report back to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Chief, good set.
Mayor Protem Patterson, item number ten, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is item number ten? Let's see. Landlord-Tennant Mediation Services. I know, I brought up the topic of there being some type of outlet for residents and even landlords who are, you know, having, you know, just a crazy experience, you know, in being a landlord, being, being a tenant, and might need some support of the city. I mean, I've honestly found that all, all that we do as of now is make some referrals out to the county, and from a lot of what I've heard from residents, that, that hasn't usually been helpful for them, and so, don't get me wrong, it's totally possible that the resolutions some residents want aren't, aren't possible, right? It's totally possible that the complaints that they have, you know, there's really nothing that can be done about it, but I, you know, I've lived in Hawthorne for quite some time and know a lot of people that live in Hawthorne, and I know there's definitely some apartment buildings that could be maintained in a much better fashion, and, you know, there's definitely some landlords that don't have a lot of love for their tenants. Somebody told me a story of a group of tenants showed up to a landlord's office in Hawthorne one time, and they had to kind of call a bunch of security, might even call the police to come protect the landlord in his office, because it was a large group of tenants kind of showed up very, very irate based upon the living conditions they've been forced to live in under this particular landlord, and so, you know, it'd be hard for me to believe that all these complaints are, you know, unfounded, and so I just want to make, I want to, you know, make sure, I would like for the city to be able to support these tenants in some type of way to getting a, a resolution, and, and not just be taking a complete hands-off approach. And so, yeah, so, so I've been asking to try to get some guidance on maybe a, you know, some kind of commission that can oversee some of these, some of these issues or some of these complaints or, or fights between landlords or tenants. I know there's a number of other. I know there's a number of other cities, according to staff had presented us, that do have commissions that, that deal with these things. So obviously in these other cities, they find a need to, to step in on a city level to support the, the residents. And so, uh, you know, I'm still trying to get some good suggestions, maybe from staff on what we can implement.
Oh, uh, Mayor Protem? I know he's gonna say something. I'd be willing to look at, see if we have models for other cities that, um, are of the same size, uh, as ours. So I'd be willing to take a look at this, just to-
I believe the city manager had brought like three or four other cities that have commissions.
Can you go ahead?
At the last meeting, yes, at the last meeting-
Quick summary, please?
At the last meeting, um, we did show other cities and certain examples of, um, how they handled landlord tenant mediation that was actually city organized.
Mm-hmm.
Um, most of the cities in South Bay, however, and those are some of the bigger cities, um, that I, I can't recall, I know Culver City has a little different program, it's very unique. And that was something that we really strongly recommended against. And that's, um, actually requiring any landlord, um, tenant dispute to go through city uh, mediation by requiring by ordinance, uh, lease, any lease to have a provision that requires them to go through the city. Which I, uh, you know, the, again, the, once we start a project like this, um, gotta consider the cost and the risk, legal risk involved of, cause when you, when you're stepping in the middle of a private dispute between, um, two parties, there, and you, and you, even though we have good intent of trying to assist in coming up with a resolution, um, you get, you might end up being, getting involved in that further dispute that may get bigger. On the, on the, uh, the staff report for this item tonight, I listed several, um, agencies that does provide, uh, landlord tenant mediation, they were suggested by, during the last council meeting, um, and the choice mediation program which costs a hundred sixty dollars per hour, that was, that seems to be the most popular route for some of the South Bay cities and other smaller cities, such as Redondo Beach, um, Torrance, Rancho Palos Verdes, Laguna, City of Laguna, City of Beverly Hills. And what I've learned from, uh, communicating with the person there is that the cities, Torrance and Redondo Beach, they put a cap on the amount of money that the city will provide for these, um, mediation program. And there's also, uh, someone mentioned Loyola Law School and American Arbitration Association. Loyola Law School has a full mediation program. Um, it is a standard rate of two hundred fifty dollars an hour, but that is at a scale based on your income, so if you're, if an, if a tenant, let's say, is not making fifty thousand, lower than fifty thousand a year income, then they can participate without any charge through Loyola Law School mediation program. Um, those earning seventy to hundred thousand annually would pay eighty dollars, those, they have a sliding scale based on your level of income, which I thought was very, um, helpful for, uh, some of the tenant landlord mediation disputes that you may come, come from this city. But in terms of forming a committee, um, I, I think that's for some of the bigger cities and I, I'm kinda reluctant as your city attorney to recommend something like that because of the potential, uh, risk, whatever it may be. Cause you're, when you're stepping in as a, as a mediator, somebody's not gonna be happy, uh, at the end of the mediation as well, and, and you know, they, um, it, it just, you're in a serious, uh, dispute, and to side with, let's say, one or the other, or to, it, it may, you may not always have a happy solution for all, so.
But, but it looks like there's a number of cities that take this action.
There are, um, there are some cities that do, but, um, just in the surrounding areas. Uh, and also LA County provides a free mediation program for landlord, uh, tenant dispute mediation. Um, but, um, for the surrounding area, immediate surrounding areas, there's no cities that in South Bay that provides that kind of, uh,
Right.
service for the landlord tenant dispute.
To the chair.
And then, uh, Councilwoman-
Yeah.
Councilwoman Reyes English, and then Councilwoman Valentine.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember, um, Patterson, again for bringing this item to the council. I think a lot of the complaints that the land, um, that the council receives and also city manager is, um, basically the eviction process, right? Being evicted and not having a way of, of having those, um, funding or sources to be able to move, right?
Oh, oh, that, that wasn't the only issue, um, many of the complaints I've heard is just the condition of the property, and the landlord are not, you know, maintaining it properly.
Yeah. Um, in my work in the City of Los Angeles, when I handle housing cases, there's a lot of referrals that we make. Uh, City of Los Angeles has a mediation with the city attorney's office, is mitigating, you know, they, they sit and litig, you know, it's, it's a he says, she said, basically. And, um, and then of course if they fall under HACLA, which is the Los Angeles Housing, excuse me, section eight, or, um, some sort of assistance housing, and they have, uh, a griev, a grievance, there's a board that oversees their case. And, you know, it's, it's mitigated that way. However, there's pro bono attorneys too, like Benzettic Legal Services, there's legal aid, there's nonprofit organizations that provide support to tenants. Um, it's my hope that the city council and, um, the city manager just takes the initiative to make a running list, if you will, of, of, of agencies, supporting agencies for these types of cases, these types of requests, so it's easier for us to just make a referral versus, they call and they say, yeah, we can't help you. See, we don't ever wanna do that, we wanna be of service. So as long as we're making a referral, or having, uh, for instance, uh, Benzettic Legal Services, reaching out to them and having uh, a one-on-one with them and asking if they would be, uh, willing to assist us. So that if there is a situation like this, we have a dedicated pro bono agency that we could just make a referral to. And I think that's, that's, um, helpful, but I do hear what you're saying with regards to, you know, landlord, um, upkeep and, and things like this, um, it, 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 it's a two-way thing, you know?
Yeah, I mean, my biggest concern is, I, I just don't think that, um, you know, and ma- maybe we need to get some data, right, I was talking to one of the interns about data earlier today. Maybe we need to get some data to see exactly how these things are being resolved, right, but from what I've been, the, the communication I've, I've gotten from a lot of residents is, um, the referrals that we make, uh, don't provide enough support. Um, and I think somebody had commented that the county's just kinda behind on a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's just my hope that we can provide some greater support for our residents.
Yeah, and, and I've also worked with the City of Torrance with regards to, um, housing complaints. So when there's tenants that have a housing complaints on a landlord, um, it's, you know, sent to building and safety. And it's, it's them that send out the inspection. And then they, 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 they obviously, um, find whatever the issues are and then place those on the landlord for a certain period of time to get, you know?
So, but also that we don't do that, that that's not under our purview to go out and inspect any kind of-
It's not us.
Yeah, so-
It's not us.
So it's referred to the county, the county has to send someone out to inspect, see that there's something wrong and all that stuff, but-
The housing department.
If that system is not enough, you know-
So through the charity, if it's a habitability issue, um, if it's a, uh, such, such a dilapidated state where due to the fault of the apartment owners, that it's just uninhabitable. Those are the situations that the Health and Safety Department County comes in to inspect. In terms of building and safety, that would be structural problem with the building. Then building and safety would come in and inspect, and if they need to red-tag it, they would need to red-tag it. Um, but that's, that's city issue, building and safety issues. But in terms of habitability, those are issues that I think, um, I, I don't, it, these, these situations are fact-specific. It depends on the situation. Um, I did speak to a code enforcement officer about several situation in which he investigated, and he found out that basically it was a tenant on both times that he mentioned, it was, and lately he's been seeing more of this, that when he started investigating that it was actually the tenant that, um, was kinda at fault for the situation, creating the situation. Um, one situation he mentioned was, he checked into a, uh, someone complaining about, uh, infestation of vermin and, and whatnot, and, and he contacted the landlord, even though it's not really code issue, he contacted the landlord and landlord explained that he's been sending someone to, uh, what do you call it? The people that basically, and, and every time they, the person would make an appointment to come in and, you know, check, check the, the situation out, that the, the appointment would be canceled by the tenant, and it would be, that would be repeatedly done, and the landlord showed him the log, actually showing that. So, there are other issues involved, I'm not saying that all issues are the tenant's fault, and I'm not saying that you know, all issues are the landlord's fault, but it's, it's a very fact-specific thing. And, and, you know, it's the decision to either form a city commission to be its own mediator, um, that's for the council to decide. But based on what I was, um, directed to, to look at, at the other programs being offered within the South Bay and such programs as Loyola Law School program. The fact that out of all of these, that Loyola Law School had a sliding scale based on the income level of the participants, I found that more appealing.
How would we compel the landlord and the tenant to participate in a Loyola Law Mediation Program?
Well, so it would be, um, if, if, if they came to a, let's say, uh, I don't, we don't have a department that would handle that, but if you, for instance, uh, you know, somebody, a tenant comes to one of the council members, and they complain about a, a living situation, um, then, then we could, the staff can take the direction and, and refer them to program like that, you know, so give them the information so they could make contact-
But if we refer, let's say, the tenant, the, the resident to that program, w- how would the landlord be required to participate in that mediation?
Well, that, the, these are not, uh, mandatory mediation, it would require the cooperation of both willing parties for both sides, so, um, I, I guess we could, the staff can issue a letter, because I, I don't know how many of these situations comes about, but we could recommend programs such as that, uh, mediation program to the, uh, the landlord and the tenant, um, and, and see if they're willing to do that or not. But we can't mandate that people participate in mediation.
Or even we cannot enforce what the mediation said, okay, the lease landlord have to fix the pipe on the bathroom that is leaking. So how we enforce that, we don't have that. We cannot enforce, we cannot say the landlord, you have to do all what's gonna happen. He can just say, I don't care.
Well, you, I, you assume that if they decide to go into mediation, both parties have agreed they're going to abide by whatever the mediator says.
Yeah, but the mediation-
Otherwise, there's no point in going to mediation in the first place.
If the mediator have no power to enforce them, to force the landlord to do something to improve the life of the, of the tenants, let's say he was a sink is broke, or, or the water's not running, how, how can we say that we're going to send the court enforcements or the pu, or the building and safety to go inspect after the mediation?
In a mediation, you would typically come to an agreement.
Yeah, exactly, but then how you enforce that?
So, so at the end of the mediation, the parties would have come to an agreement, and apparently, and again, you can't force them, but if they agree to have a mediation, then the, the landlord and the tenant both would have agreed that they want to abide by whatever the mediator decides.
But let's say I'm the landlord, I'm gonna say, oh yeah, I'm agree, I'm gonna fix that, but then I go back and do nothing.
And then, you're right, we don't have a way to enforce it, so we would have to have some kind of mechanism to follow up on that. We, it wouldn't be enough to just refer it, we would have to have a mechanism to follow up.
And that's the challenge, right?
To make certain it was done, yes.
That's the challenge we have.
And that's, that's my concern, look, guys, uh-
It's not like we're not close to making any kind of decision, but I'll, I'll let you guys know, I'm gonna continue to
Yeah.
to keep this conversation going because-
Because LA, when we talk about LA, LA is a big city, they have their own health department. They don't depend on the county itself, right? So, so LA have a much better communication between, per se, from the building and safety and the health department and, and their own court enforcements than we have here, because we depend a lot on the county for our health and human service, right, we don't have a department, they call Health and Human Service in City of Hawthorne. If we would have that, that department was supposed to be in charge to make sure that landlord is going to abide by any irregularation on his building when it comes to sewer pipe, plumbing, you know, elec, like electricity, some other issues that is not, uh, building structure. So that's the dilemma that we have, is how, even if we create a commission, the commission can come and listen to the problem, try to tell, okay, mister landlord, you have to do this and that. But they can go back and, and, and do nothing, and then they start all over again.
So I guess now, now my turn to give you guys feedback, look, I think this is well-intended.
Yeah, it is.
This, it's well-intended, but we're a city of ninety-five thousand, uh, people. We're, we don't, we're not the size of LA County, we're not the size of Los Angeles. Those two are large bureaucracies with, uh, thousands and thousands of employees deep, that if they wanna create the authority to do something like this, they can. We cannot duplicate the authority of a public health department. We cannot duplicate the, uh, authority of a court. And mediation is not enforceable. And if somebody's unhappy, they can still go to court. So what's the point, I mean, we create a, a board here where their mediators, they don't like it, we're gonna be cut into a lawsuit that's gonna drag the city attorney's department into the whole middle of the thing, is, uh, and, uh, defending the city. So money-wise, there's just no way we can do it, and, uh, power-wise, it just takes it, we can't, we can't, we can't with like, what, with two, three, or five, uh, commissioners from the community to make a decision like that? Uh, bring, bringing people in and then, like you say, enforcing the mediation, we just can't, it just simply it just simply can't, and I just kind of, I heard my council colleague is that if, what we said before, in case you have a leaky fixture, leaky plumbing and you're and you're having trouble with your landlord, you give him the referral to the public health department, they're the ones with the teeth, they're the ones with enforcement. There's no way we can expedite and force them to go quicker, that's their problem, that's why we have Holly Mitchell, we gotta bitch at her or whatever, complain to her, that's why she's our representative, excuse my French, guys, but that's who we have. What the heck, instead of focusing on other stuff, focus on this, right, I mean, I mean, like, I mean, it's the truth. Or LA, we, you know, we really can't duplicate what they do. We can't become our own little court system, in that way we can, uh, we would be able to enforce it, but no city does that, and the mediation is just gonna be weakeneded. I think we do have a lot of these resources, I don't think the city is in a position to subsidize it. None of these other cities are subsidizing, I think they're doing a lot of referrals. But can we maybe, uh, have like, uh, a section within the housing department of, uh, one or two employees that we invest in to maybe focus solely on this, the referrals, when they get calls, et cetera? Or can we have like, uh, a link, a, a series of links, and if you run into the situation, click here. If you run into a situation, click here, these are the resources, I think we can. But if somebody could show me like a way we could do this with a commission, uh, that another city has done as a mediation, a group with, a board with power, that we won't, you know, I think, I have, I have yet to seen it, but I'm still, I'm still hopeful.
And, and Mr. May, and the other thing that even this program that is, um, low fees like LMU, you know, some of these tenants does not wanna go pay, uh, some fee to go for mediation, because then is, they don't have the money, because that's what they struggle, right, they don't have the money sometimes even to put food on the table. So they don't have the money to go pay, to go for mediation, that then at the end, the landlord might not even comply what the mediation have told them to do. And then even probably the landlord's gonna retaliate or something, okay, I'm gonna throw you out. I'm gonna put you on the street. So, so it is a ve, a big problem, to tell you the truth, that has been going on for many, many years, not just, uh, yesterday, so this has been going on since I've been in the city, you know, twenty-five years ago, that we used to deal with tenants and landlord issues as a, as a community advocate over there. But it is, it is a problem. Uh, David, it is a problem, but it's how to find the right solution, that Mr. May is right. The county have to improve their, their service, and they've been neglecting that. Uh, so, and we know the housing department have all these referrals to give people, but sometimes they might even not follow up on those referrals, because they hit a, a roadblock, somebody might not- roadblock, somebody might not, you know, call them up or it, it might take the kind of six months to come to inspect the building. It's true.
It's a problem. So, well, I mean, through the chair, a couple things, not all of our residents who have landlord issues are poor.
Well, it's true.
Um, other cities do have housing commissions, um, Inglewood just formed something. Uh, so it's not like this is some new concept and, uh, like council member Valentine said, you know, if two parties decide to pursue mediation, which they don't have to do, more than likely they'll, they'll adhere to, to the results if they chose to do so. You know, maybe one of the things that, that we can do is, uh, put some greater pressure on the county to be more, be responsive to the needs of our residents.
Yeah.
And so if there's something that we can do.
That's good.
Yeah, there's something that we can do to, to help put some pressure on the county to be more responsive to the needs of our residents, that's definitely a good place to start, but, um, yeah, I, I mean, I agree that it's not an easy answer and it's unlikely that we'll have a solution that will fix all problems, but I don't think saying that it's too hard, um, is the right response.
And, and, and actually David, another thing to, is to do is we have not just the county, but even the love of the state. The love of the state to create laws that can, can deal with these issues because if the, if the county is not doing what it's supposed to be doing, maybe the legislative body in Sacramento can put some laws on the books that actually cities could apply.
You know, so a couple great things that have been brought up then, you know, we, we should, um, have a conversation with our, um, county supervisor and our assembly person and our senator, see what kind of ideas they can provide and support they can provide and be more responsive because on a statewide level, there's a, there's an ask for more housing. So there should also be, um, them bringing, you know, greater support to support that housing.
To protect.
So I think those are things that we can probably all agree on of something we can do right now is to reach out to, uh, our elected officials that, that represent us and ask for some greater support in this particular area, um, some greater responsiveness, uh, to, to our residents, but I, you know, I still like to kind of figure out a solution. There's something that we can do, you know, we, we need to say, okay, the county's not necessarily being as responsible as we need them to be, like, okay, the state is requiring more housing, but they're not providing us more resources, what is it that we can do? So we still need to figure out what we can do. Um, that's more than just giving some referrals.
Uh, one thing, I don't, this is not within the, uh, the topic, it's slightly within the topic, topic, but we, yes, we do have some slum lords here.
Yes, yes.
And we need to figure a way, I would like to figure a way of going out at them directly. I mean, I'd, I would like to attack that because, you know, we're, 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 we're just like, we're, we're doing it after the result of, uh, bad actors, you know, treating their tenants incorrectly. I would like to uproot these guys and out of here, these guys are people from like Beverly Hills and, uh, Palos Verdes or out of state that just come by property and rent it. You, have you guys heard that, you know, it's not only, you don't only just rent the, the rooms, the, you know, the, the units, you also have to pay for parking, what kind of crap is that? That's awful. So, I mean, if there's something that we, and so I'm tempted, okay, we enforce that, you can't be charging for parking, they might end up rolling into the, into the rent. So we have bad actors and I would, it, I would like to ask the city attorney, is there anything that we can, uh, do to, uh, go after these slum lords as a whole for their properties? You know, like, I would like to see what powers we have to be able to do that. I know we have the power of, uh.
Not giving them the license, not renew their license. That's the one thing that you could take away is not renew their license when they come.
Based on the number of complaints.
Yeah, so if we got a lot of complaints in those, in those landlords, right? It's not to renew their license and, and that's one tool that we have.
And not be afraid of repaying these licenses.
Exactly, like, you know, so that's, that's one app, uh, you know, app that we got in our disposal. And, 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 and when we send a letter to the border supervisor, Holly Mitchell, Vaughn, maybe that letter, we should all sign, all the council members, not just come from your office, so, uh, all of us should sign that letter.
Yeah, of course, of course.
As far as not approving the license, I think we would have to have notification in advance of that, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, so there's, there's due process involved.
It's due process, yeah.
But we would have a administrative hearing for any revocation of a license, uh, but, you know, all of these, these situations, including, um, complaints about the slow-moving, um, county agencies, you know, it, it's, it has to be something fact specific. We can't just say, you know, the health department is doing a poor job to Holly Mitchell's office.
Why not? Yeah, actually, why not?
Because.
We're not going to court.
When I talk to some of the court enforcement officers, they say, yeah, there's about two weeks delay before they could come out and investigate, but they do follow up. So it's, it's, some will say that they don't and some say they do, so we, it needs some further investigation, I think, before we start blaming and pointing fingers. Um, and, and, you know, I just wanna take a more cautious approach to this and, you know, business license revocation is, is fine, but, you know, that's also fact driven.
I know you say cautious, that's, but.
So we need to set, well, a couple things, these complaints didn't just start yesterday, right? So, you know, like, like Ms. Montero said, we've been getting these type of complaints for a number of years, right? So there's a lot of anecdotal evidence that this is happening, right? So I understand that in, in pursuing some type of accusation or, or somebody wanna be at a site some, um, um, cite some specific incidents, instances. So, you know, what do we have in place to, to collect that information? What do we have in place to collect that data?
If I can recommend, uh, giving city staff ninety days to calculate a survey and, um, uh, do data research on what issues are actually there. Obviously, I've heard everyone speaking, it seems like there are different issues from maintaining the properties to slum lords to, uh, properties that aren't maintained outside. Let staff calculate and compilate, uh, data, then we can work on a letter to send to our supervisor, Holly Mitchell, once that's completed.
Okay, are we good guys?
All right.
Uh, I mean, not just our supervisor, definitely ask our, our assembly person and our, our, um, our senator, let them know that, hey, we need greater resources to support the housing that the state is, is requiring us to have. And I, I still would like to ask for, um, continue to come back with some kind of recommendations that we can potentially implement on a city level to, to support our residents. So if anybody tells me that it's too hard, um, or, hey, we give referrals, my response is that is not enough. And so until we have something that we can say that we are doing this, I'm definitely not gonna be done with this particular subject.
To the chair real quick and then I'll.
Yeah, just so we can move on.
You know, I get a lot of constituent emails, a lot of constituent, um, requests for help and I handle those cases myself. Um, sometimes I'll refer them to Vaughn, sometimes I'll refer them for further, you know, recommendation through the city attorney's office, but, you know, I, I tread lightly because I don't wanna become part of the legal aspect of what it could potentially, you know, be, but I do have a lot of referrals and, um, I have yet to have any of those folks call me back and tell me that I was wrong or they didn't get the assistance they needed. It's totally the opposite, they actually thank me because I also send them over to county, if it's county, or, you know, not necessarily a state matter, but it's local jurisdiction, sometimes it's not even our issue, it belongs to another city, you know.
I completely acknowledge that, I've had more than one resident tell me that you've helped them out in some of their issues, as a resident specifically said, she was on the verge of being evicted, you have to find some grant money so she can pay her rent. Um, so that is true, but we're not all, you know.
I hear you.
Uh, uh, council member, uh, Ray English.
No, but that's why I appreciate you brought this item to us because we've been hearing it for the last few years now, yeah.
All right, guys, item eleven, go ahead, councilwoman.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I, in our business recovery efforts, and this is something I wanted to, um, address some time ago, I wanna be able to, uh, assist, uh, developments and projects that have just been sitting idle pending, uh, whether or not they've been pending due to other state regulations, uh, state inspections or other. Um, because of COVID too, there's been a setback on a number of programs and, and, and projects. Um, here in the city of Hawthorne, just driving through the city, it's, it's very evident that there's still projects that have to be built out and for whatever reason, um, I want the city to be able to use discretion, but more importantly, uh, see what, what those projects that are currently pending, whether or not they need administrative review or, um, assistance in getting those, um, built out. And I think we owe it to the community who have told us time and time again, including along the parade route, that, uh, you know, we're, we're missing out on job opportunities and making revenue for the city by seeing a lot of these, uh, vacant lots and more importantly, just, um, developments that have not, um, come about. Uh, previous city council meetings, I've heard, um, recommendations and council members' remarks with regards to, uh, including businesses such as hotels and, and those alike. So if you could just, um, work with, um, city manager, city attorney and Greg McLean with the planning department to review those projects and hopefully get them going and, and get them built out. It's, it's important and it's gonna be, um, something that we need to do, uh, expeditiously and for the purpose a- again of, uh, getting them through and getting them done and out of the way and building, um, a better Hawthorne. So that's that and if I could just go to my item number.
Item number, item number twelve.
Thank you. Um, I wanna speak a little bit on emergency preparedness and how we've missed out, uh, for a number of years on emergency preparedness, more importantly, um, the space that we have for emergency management. Um, I wanna be able to, um, work collectively again with city manager and, uh, uh, city attorney with regards to emergency preparedness and assisting in getting, uh, finally, once and for all, a program going here in the city and, um, having a, a, a director, someone that would oversee the management and emergencies preparedness and more importantly, just, um, other pandemic matters, for instance. I know there's a lot of folks in our city that stepped up during COVID and assisted, uh, with regards to vaccinations and, and quarantines and postings and just assuring that the city hall was secured and folks, um, visiting city hall, but I think that falls within emergency preparedness, that falls within emergency management. I think it's important, once and for all, that we get that going. We still have yet to have a manual produce that gives us an outline of, of, um, the responsibilities, but more importantly, the task that this, uh, department would, would, uh, ultimately execute. And, um, I also wanna see how we could work with the CERT program, which is a nonprofit organization. We had some of the CERT folks here that came into city hall, we provided them certificates of recognition for completing the course. We need more community, uh, participation and, um, I wanna see how we can as a council also, uh, provide funding to this nonprofit organization, which is CERT training, CERT programs, either through stipends of, that we have and/or, um, grant monies so that we could, um, reach out to community members and ask them to, to participate in our emergency preparedness and to be prepared so that they could, um, again, have the resources, have the information and the know-how should we ever have, uh, an emergency. And this all gets tied in to, you know, earthquakes, this gets all tied in to just the whole emergency aspect. And, uh, again, I've been a champion for emergency response, I know a lot of you have been champions for emergency response and it's just something that we need to do, uh, better and we need to finally and once and for all, get that, um, up and going again and, um, that's my hope.
I have feedback on this one?
Through the chair.
Yeah, I got feedback, I'm gonna go first. Um, so, uh, uh, I'd like for us to be very careful on this i- item and I've, was very disappointed, I've attended, uh, uh, emergency preparedness, uh, institutes before. It's a living document, it's a document and ours is incomplete. And I'll be straightforward, we had some guy called Claudio, he was just warming up his seat as an employee of the city, didn't be, didn't add to that document, oh, it takes time, and that's false. We didn't see any improvement, we didn't see any difference in the document, he was with us for a couple of years, two, three years. Neil Gaffney didn't do anything when he was here. Resident, got the job, but he was there, nothing to the document, nothing. So I think we need to be careful that we don't hire a person to do it, that we might, uh, consider, I mean, discussion of course with my council, that we hire, uh, contract with an emergency, uh, preparedness group that knows what they're doing, that can finalize that document once and for all. Councilwoman English and I, we've gone to those same, uh, emergency preparedness institutes and we, all these other cities, uh, have that document, uh, done and completed with names of who the, uh, different people for all the different responsibilities during, for an emergency, uh, who those individuals will be and assigned and current. So I just think that we need to be careful with that, we need to get that thing completed, uh, and that's a, that's our, our master document on emergency preparedness. And I, I really think that we should consider, like I said, I know I'm repeating it, a, a contracted person as opposed to an employee.
I would agree with that, I think.
I, I'm just saying because, you know, people, they just, we already have two instances in which somebody has occupied that emergency preparedness position and did not deliver And then Claudio too, so it's like.
Yeah, well, that's because, that's because, you know, again, um, we did this during emergencies, uh, during COVID, we hired an outside source to help us with, um, emergency preparedness and nobody participated in those Zoom meetings with that person, that individual, and we had to end up paying them anyway. But, but what I'm saying again, um, it's something that we need to consider, I'm not looking at the past, I'm moving, you know, forward, uh, in the future of having our own, not sharing, not providing contractual services because again, with those individuals that you're finding recruiting, outsourcing, whatever it is that you're, you're, you're trying to bring back to the city, you know, they're gonna be held accountable, right? Which we never held the other two accountable. So that's kinda where I'm at.
Uh, councilwoman Montero, I think you were ready to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, while I agree with, uh, you know, emergency preparedness because, uh, my, uh, all these years with the, with the school district, we were mandated to have emergency preparedness, you know, every two, we would have to revise the document because, you know, the state, the county would come and check, make sure that we had that in place. Uh, that is where in our Hawthorne School District, all the eleven schools are shuttled if something happened, you know, that, um, American Red Cross will send you to go to the Hawthorne School District because each of the school have all the equipment and the food that community can go there.
Oh.
So I was gonna ask Vaughn is about Samuel English because he's been doing some, a lot of stuff during the COVID, right? So I don't know, what, uh, is he trained to become this person that my want, that we wanna hire to be the emergency management?
I don't feel comfortable talking about that in the open forum, but Sam has taken the lead on our emergency preparation. He has, uh, led us in the right direction during COVID and he has attended several trainings on CERT training.
Okay.
But as far as any other, uh, personnel issues, I think that would be a closed session.
Yeah, because I think, you know, he have stepped up during, like you said, during COVID and even prior COVID, when, when, uh, those two gentleman left, you know, Samuel has been doing a lot of this stuff, so, so, uh, but I know, you know, the person has to be trained, have to know what, what they doing.
Exactly.
Uh, and it is, it is a tremendous task because it's not just, uh, create a book, but, you know, all the department heads have to be involved, you know, and, you know, where can they respond if there is an, uh, an emergency? So all these things have to be in place, so, so, so that is what I agree that if it's not in-house, so maybe we'll bring somebody to, uh, temporarily to give us on the right track.
The document.
And then we could, we could find somebody that could be implement that in case something happens.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just to go back on number eleven, I do concur with Ms. English about project that has been pending, so we wanna make, you know, give some push, uh, make sure that the people can revise those project based on, on building and safety code because we know the codes change constantly from the state, especially, I know there is new code since two thousand sixteen, so make sure that they, they follow those, uh, building and safety code amendment and maybe text what I sum up this project, especially hotels, because we need these hotels for all these events that's coming to SoFi Stadium.
And the Olympics.
And the Olympic, yeah, it's all, the Olympics open is gonna be there, now the World Cup final is gonna be there.
Right.
The MCA tournament is gonna be there, so.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, elected officials reports, Mr. City Treasurer.
Sounds good. Good evening, everyone, thanks for coming in.
Thanks for coming in. That was a wonderful parade. I had a great time. I brought my daughters. Unfortunately, my wife couldn't attend. I really liked the dancing horses. Those were awesome. And the jumpers kept the kids really entertained. It was a lot of fun. The music was nice and loud. And it was a good time, and it was great to see all the residents out and about. I'm just going to leave it at that. Cheers.
Thank you, sir. Any news from the city clerk's office?
Just that the nomination period starts next week on July 18th. And you do need to make an appointment with the clerk's office if you're going to pull nomination papers.
It's the 18th Monday. Diana?
The 18th Monday, yeah.
And then it closes when?
It closes August 12th at 5:00 p.m. It's a closed Friday, but we will be open that day.
And by appointment only, what's the hours for the appointments?
The appointments are done in one-hour increments, depending on the first caller of the day, what time they want to make it. Then they go on in hour increments. They start at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, until 5:00, 5:30?
Till 5:00 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
So nomination for city council and city treasurer and clerk, it's open. On 18th for nomination. And then you become candidate after the county certified you.
Your signatures.
After August 12th. So you're not a candidate yet.
Right.
All right. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great meeting tonight. I was hoping it was going to be shorter, but it's still 7:30.
Me, too.
It's still short. Just depending how long it takes.
We have, you know, thank you to staff again, and thank you for the public to come in and talk about the issues. Definitely, you know, so we have to have a better line of communication, especially when we close the streets. So I'm pretty sure something went on on Hawthorne Way that we were not aware of, because I was not aware of that. So, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. And thank you, the chief, to give us this option about safety over here in the city chamber. But we have said a lot for these past four days. So again, I have to say Vaughn and the entire Centennial Committee did an outstanding job. But this was a collective effort, right? It was a team effort of all the departments came together to do the work, the police, the public work, the finance, the community service department, the housing, the building and safety. So they did a tremendous job. And I have to say that I felt, you know, honored to be a part of this council for these past four days, because we did a tremendous job showing that this is truly a city of good neighbor. And the Centennial dinner was phenomenal, the parade was phenomenal, the museum, the Dead Museum was good. Yes, Monday night, State of the City, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that was wonderful. And then today, we opened that Time Capsule, and then we're going to put stuff in there for another 50 years. So I am very proud to be your council member and to be a citizen of this city for more than 25 years, you know. And I'm happy. And I'm really happy to see that the joint on the people, the childrens, you know, waving and calling our names. So I'm very happy about that. So again, happy birthday, Hawthorne, and we love the people of Hawthorne, and we are here to fight for you. So thank you and God bless.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Angie Race English?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just first start off by giving my apologies to the business owner that had a negative impact this past weekend. That's not something that we intentionally want to do in any way or form, but I personally apologize. And I apologize, too, for the experience that you had that you shouldn't have experienced, and we hope to do better moving forward. I also want to make mention city manager with regards to business licensing and the issues that we continuously have with regards to access and more importantly, personality matters. I know that you're on top of that and will continue to work on that. I want to be able to also implement something that we could, you know, capture complaints that are coming into city hall. If it's going to be the information center where someone has a form, if somebody has a grievance or has a complaint with regards to department, please take down that information, make sure that that complaint is vetted, and that you are giving instructions to the department and what they need to do to fix that issue. And so that's important. So thank you for bringing that to our attention in the public. I also want to echo again the sentiments that everyone's been making, especially the mayor, city council members, all of those that participated in this great weekend, this great week. Vaughn Norris, his committee, everyone, just kudos. I can't say enough, although I wasn't able to attend some of them, I just kept hearing great things and folks sending me pictures and showing me how proud they were. And so thank you for that. I really appreciate that. I want to talk a little bit about our resolution that we passed, and the council wanted to thank the mayor and the council members with regards to the Solar Panel Alliance, which we all know that there's a push right now happening with the CPUC, which is being lobbied by Edison and other electric companies to try and tax solar panels. And to me, that is so shameful. As a city, we worked on Clean Power Alliance of Southern California. We made our city 100% renewable. We've been members to the Clean Alliance to assure that there's accessibility and, you know, rebates and all kinds of things to help our residents. And for the CPUC to consider taxing solar panel families and individuals, shame on you. I want to make sure that not only that the resolution is forwarded to constituents that have solar panels, so that you're aware that we support you and that a resolution was passed. We're going to bring this to the CPUC to let them know our strong stance. And more importantly, there's a petition that's being circulated, and I want to be able for you to take a look at that petition and lean your support on that petition to assure that the CPUC does not tax solar panel families or individuals. And if they do, because they're being lobbied very aggressively by millions, if not billions of dollars, of lobbyist money, you will take those panels down and forget it, right? You'll just go revert right back to your bills, because it's a lot cheaper. And so I'm a very strong advocate, and I just want to say thank you to the Solar Rights Alliance and those individuals, including Mr. Matthew here in our city, that is going to be presenting the resolution through the CPUC Commission Meeting this coming Thursday. I also want to make, just briefly, there's great parks renovations being done here in our city. We've seen a lot of parks being opened, renovated. However, there's a slight problem. Some of the RFPs that have been processed to redo some of our parks are being done during the summer months. And it takes away from the kids and those students who want to access the park, and they can't, because the parks are closed. So if there's some way that we can open these parks up while kids are still at home that need an outing, let's do that. And if we could just wait a little bit further until they're back in school or even winter months, so that we get these projects built out. And it's not all parks, it's just some. And that's just some of the complaints from some of the residents. But we want to be able to access our parks and be able to take our kids to go play in the park and not know what to do. At the end of the day, you have tennis courts that are open, but the parks are closed for the kids. And so where's the, you know, the balance there? But for the most part, that's what I want to say. And again, thank you for the opening today of the capsule. Lots of stuff. I couldn't believe how much stuff was in that capsule. Lots of great stuff. I'm going to be working also with Diana in our city clerk's office for language, so that we could place a plaque for Monica at the desk and at the city clerk's office. And I thank the mayor and the council members for your support on that as well. So thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight, residents.
Thank you. You got to speak? It's your turn, right? Councilwoman Olivia Valentine?
Thank you. Again, I want to echo the sentiments of my other council colleagues. Thank you, city manager and staff, for all of the wonderful events that we participated in, from the elegant dinner Friday night to the great parade and block party, the Sunday morning at the Historical Society, which was really fantastic. And I want to make a special mention of, to the Historical Society, those people are all volunteers, and they actually curated all those items that you see in the museum. And I want to give a special shout out to them for really caring enough to create a really beautiful museum for us to go to and actually be able to look at some of the memories that were created by people who preceded us. I also want to thank, a special thanks to the mayor for the idea of the unique idea of the State of the City. I thought it was unique. I thought it was a great idea to have the community there and have it free of charge. I think everyone appreciated it very much. I want to explore the idea, I'd like to direct the city attorney to explore the idea of the feasibility of giving a bonus to those of the city staff that worked on the event. I think they went over and above their regular duties. I think they spent hundreds of hours, and I think Saturday was especially amazing to me, how much time and effort, especially by the Public Works Department and the Police Department, that went into that parade. So I think if there's some way we can give special recognition, I don't know how much it would cost, I'd like to ask the city attorney to look into that or to tell us what that could be. And maybe there are some alternatives we could look at as well. But I think they should be especially shown our special appreciation. I have to announce that I'm going to have to withdraw from being a delegate for the League of California Cities. I have a potential conflict. I'm going to be on vacation until September 5th, and the League of California Cities starts September 7th. And I am not certain by all of the cancellations and delays that are going on with the flights, I can't guarantee that I'd be back by the 7th. So that's one thing. And then I also have an arbitration that I'm supposed to conduct, and that's supposed to start on the 7th. So I think I'm going to have to withdraw very reluctantly from being a delegate for the league. So, Mr. City Attorney, I think you know who is the next alternate for me. Okay, and then the last thing I want to speak to is, in my opinion, the meetings on the Charter City and cannabis should be open. They should not be in special meetings. I think they should be held in regular meetings for the regular city council meetings. I think these are especially really important issues that the residents need to be a part of and need to have full information on. And I think that having them during the hours of the, having them at special times, many residents won't even know that these meetings are going to be conducted, despite the notices that go out. One of the residents came to the podium and said specifically that sometimes the notices don't, they don't, the residents don't find out about the meetings. So I think that these meetings should be open, and they are open, but I think they should be at regular times, regular city council meetings, so that all of the residents can have a chance to weigh in. These are really, really important issues, and I think everyone should have a chance to weigh in. And I'd like to, I'd like to find out, if I could, what the, or what the position of my council colleagues would be on that.
So not a discussion, it's just presentation?
To the chair.
Go ahead.
I'll speak specifically to the Cannabis Working Group Committee. It's been working since February, and it's accessible at that time through Zoom, because we were still shut down. But it's been open now since we came back to in-person. And thus far, we've had participants who view on YouTube and have communicated through city attorney, and responses go from his office to those viewing on any number of questions. But it's accessible, it's open, and thus far, we've had no one come. However, everyone's online watching and bringing questions to the city attorney and responses going back and forth through an email that's given for the community to access the Cannabis Working Group Committee email. And that's where everybody sends their questions, their concerns, views. And I'm sure we'll get more, we'll get more, not just views, but we'll be participating just because we are open and there is interest.
All right. So we'll move on to our next person. Mayor Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to kind of apologize for, to our business owners that might have been inconvened due to the parade over the weekend. That definitely was a concern of mine as I was having the time of my life in that parade. But I did, you know, notice, obviously, there were some businesses where the access was restricted, and definitely want to, you know, apologize to any businesses that, you know, had a bad, poor experience due to the parade, and definitely want to apologize to any business owners or any community members in general who reached out to the city for clarification and wasn't really met with the utmost of respect. But with that said, I do want to thank everybody in the community that's come out today and paid attention to what's going on and voiced their opinion and, you know, had something to say and took a position and let us know how you feel. Definitely appreciate your participation, your participation that really gives us the information to make informed decisions. I want to thank the staff for, I also want to thank the community that's out watching the council meeting on YouTube and on Channel 22. You know, want to encourage you to continue to pay attention and let us know, you know, what's important to you and how you feel. But of course, I want to thank the staff for all of your hard work. Want to thank the police department for all of your hard work. And in general, but of course, especially over the course of this weekend, everybody within the city was around the entire weekend, and I was quite impressed. I know that my job wanted me to hang out at the city all weekend. I probably wouldn't be as excited to do so. So it's awesome that, oh, we have so much staff that really enjoy, you know, their work and their contribution to our community and really devoted so much of their time. I don't know if it was compensated or not, but so much of their time to making sure that we had just such a spectacular weekend. And speaking of the Centennial Events, you know, again, I want to recognize my council colleagues and the city manager for organizing such great events, because I promise you, I had nothing to do with it myself. I just showed up and had the time of my life. And I really did have a great time. And there's been a number of residents that did ask that we do this, at least do the parade and the block party on an annual basis, and I definitely would be all for it. Yeah, it's just been a great event. I just want to thank everybody who participated, who made it happen, who, you know, allowed me to participate, and it was just a spectacular experience for me and I'm sure for everybody else in the community. I thought I had a whole list of things to say, but it looks like I don't. I guess I don't. Yeah, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Everybody else okay?
Mr. Mayor, just thank Kyle Ornament for that helicopter when you do your speech.
Oh, yeah. You could go ahead and thank yourself.
Oh, thank you. Kyle, we want to say thank you for bringing that helicopter, right? The Vat helicopter. So that was a wonderful thing to bring. So thank you very much, Kyle. I know you were instrumental to bring that to the parade, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
That was absolutely a good treat. Kids liked it very much. So thank you. Okay, we'll cover, don't worry, I'll cover all of that. Nah, well, I'll do it for you. Yeah. No, and, well, first thing before I talk about the Centennial, is there a possibility that we could have like an illegal business tip line? Do we have teeth to enforce something like that, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, is that something that you could take a look at? Or do you already foresee issues with that? I don't want to task you with something that's...
Take an educated look at it and report back.
Yeah, just let us know, because there's a lot of businesses that, you know, I know we had MAS that was able to determine that certain people weren't paying their taxes, but I guess this goes beyond if there's businesses that have not, you know, that have not done their due diligence and applied for business license.
So if it's just a, like a hotline that you want to put on a city website or something, then we wouldn't need to come back with a full resolution or ordinance? But I don't know what other...
Oh, look, I'm concerned that, I don't, I want you to take a look at it, the viability, and if it has teeth and if it has, and will fulfill its purpose. I don't want to just have you put stuff on there that's just gonna be filling up the space and nobody's answering telephone lines and we can't do anything about it. So I'd just like for the city manager and the city attorney just to ponder over it and tell me, be straight up with us and say, that could work or not.
What type of violations are we looking for?
People who don't, who have a business open and probably won't, don't have a business license. And sometimes residents see that and kind of...
There's a need for it. There definitely is a need for it.
So, hey, people gotta do their due diligence, they have to do the right thing. There's many business owners that are small, that are, you know, doing the right thing and others who are not. And of course, those people who are not doing the right thing are gonna profit and they're gonna enjoy life and, you know, they don't pay their employee taxes even and doing all these other things and file for help from the state government, federal government, get all this money, and they don't even have a business license and not paying business tax. How is that fair? I've seen that too many times. All right. So, so yes, of course, we had a great, do I sound angry today? No, but I really thank my council colleagues for all the ideas that you guys have brought up. Each one of them has a great purpose, and just finding the right recipe to make certain things happen and implement certain things to help our community members, so I appreciate you guys. Okay? So the Centennial was a great, a great time. You know, we're still in the Centennial year, so we can celebrate and have our, the Centennial local down the street up till the end of the year if we wanted to, right? And there's so many things to celebrate, from the millennia, the Centennial Dinner, to the parade and the block party, to the day at the Historical Society, my State of the City that people were there, and including today's unveiling of the time capsule. So I want to congratulate my, I want to congratulate my colleagues here for having the foresight and pulling the trigger on the festivities, because we allotted the money for this, and we trusted our staff to be able to do the right thing, because we know we have great professional staff that know what they're doing, and I had no question that this was gonna be a great event, and it exceeded my expectations. So I want to give all the staff who were involved, and our interns, and the people in Parks and Rec, our Police Department, who kept it safe and made this event fun and exciting for everyone. Please give them a round of applause. I will, I will write at the edge, don't, so, at the State of the City, it was great. The purpose of the State of the City in particular was to have it outside, no longer having it in the middle of day, no longer having to pay $30 per seat, and having to rush back to work, or residents who, we were a working class community, our residents can't take the day off. And so how are our residents, the State of the City is for our residents, it's not for the businesses. It's for our residents and it's for our community members to hear about the things that are happening in the city. Businesses before were paying to sit at the table, so the people, they're not going anywhere, they're not going anywhere. So I felt that it was important that we had it to be accessible, free, at a time that I felt that people would be able to come after work and enjoy a nice, cool evening and hear the good news, that my council colleagues and I think the accomplishments that we have done over the last year, and it's a team effort, we highlighted our departments, we highlighted our Police Department and all the different things and new businesses. And so I was really happy that, you know, everybody was there, and I sent you regards, and it was really cool. And we had a lot of elected officials that were there, a lot of friends of Hawthorne from Torrance, from Inglewood, Lawndale, from City of Bell. And I want to, I want to mention in particular my friends from, our friends from the city of Pico Rivera, Councilmember Gustavo Camacho, who made his way all the way from Pico Rivera to be with us. So I also wanted to mention Councilmember Jesse Alvarado from Hawaiian Gardens that came all the way from that corner of LA County to be with us, and from City of Bell, Ali Saleh, mayor for the city, and one of his deputies, Mr. Royo, and from City of Torrance, Inglewood, the councilmembers, the mayor of, the mayor and councilmembers from Inglewood were here, the mayor and councilmembers from...
Lomita?
From, no, from, oh my God, from Gardena, from the city of Carson, we had people who were represented.
RPV.
The Congresswoman sent her deputies, the supervisor sent her deputy as well, Senator Steve Bradford was here, Tina McKinner, our Assemblywoman, also sent a representative. I mean, we had tons of people. So I wanted just to mention those two colleagues, I think we might have not mentioned them, but I just want to let you guys know that we appreciate you. Something real special, I still have time, right? I want to introduce our interns. I don't think we've introduced them to the public, and I could tell you that my interaction with at least one of them, and the other ones I know are also following through with a lot of great stuff, was great. Come up to the podium so we can introduce you. Our city manager will do that, because he's the one that brought your interns. And you can tell us your names, what do you do? What are you studying?
If we can have our elected interns take the podium, introduce your first, first name, last name, the university you attend, and what you're actually, what duties you are, responsibilities you actively have right now.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yahia Liban, a recent graduate of El Camino College. I'll be transferring to USC or UC San Diego in the fall, haven't really decided yet. But yeah, I plan to pursue a degree in analytics, data science, statistics. I work with the city manager really on almost anything that he needs, from day-to-day tasks to the projects that the Centennial events be working on, so, yeah, pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Leslie Perez. I'm a rec leader at Ramona Park, and I'm currently enrolled in the University of California, Merced, going into my third year, and majoring in sociology.
Awesome.
Hey, my name is Leslie, too. You know that, did you? Say, my name is Leslie, too.
Go ahead, ma'am, let's not take her time.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Elena Peebles. I'm currently studying at the University of San Francisco, planning on majoring in politics with an environmental studies minor, and I work at the Hawthorne Memorial Center at the moment.
They participated in, they participated, all of them participated in the Centennial planning preparation, and Yahia helped us with changing the slides and helping with the speech and a lot of the activities for the State of the City. That was my close interaction with them, so I appreciate you and I appreciate you guys. So let's give them another round of applause. Yeah, it's the first time that we've ever had interns for council, okay? And so the parade was great, the helicopter that went down was really exciting, Police Department, we had some, all the neighborhood associations participating. North Hawthorne had, did they have the princess, what was the name of the princess? Princess Tiana? I don't know.
Princess Tiana.
Princess Tiana, that, you know, the kids really love that, right? Taking pictures with her, et cetera. We had a great Beach Boys band, it was just nice. Now, I'm looking forward to the presentations that Community Television are gonna put together for all the five events, so we could just put them on there and just, everybody just disseminates those videos so that we could just remember what kind of a fun time we had, right? Who? Yeah, of course. And you know, one of the things that I think we talked about, well, we're looking to give what you call it a bonus for the, all those people who are directly involved in the Centennial celebrations. And of course, along with that, I think we should have a certificate of recognition for them, so, because we really appreciate it. They went above and beyond. I think he probably could do that on his own, but absolutely, maybe there's just something that you could do with them. Include us if you could, not an obligation, but maybe at that point, we could have the videos, you know, so we can watch it during that little presentation, during that little get-together between us, et cetera, and making sure that we disseminate those videos to the community. So I guess that's it. So thank you, councilmember colleagues. If there's nothing further from my city council colleagues, I will declare this meeting over at 8:02. Thank you, everyone.